This is a special meeting. This is a special meeting and we can only talk about the three things that are on the agenda. At this time, I want to look at number one, the presentation of the Bullard County Fiscal Year 2017/2018 Budget. This is my presentation and I want to let the folks know, while working on this budget, I very much appreciate the help of our Deputy Judge Lisa Prattoff. And I very much appreciate the help of our CFO Keith Griffey. We've crunched numbers, we've cut a little bit, I'm going to go over that with you in just a second. And as the budget process begins, it's my hope that the people on this governing board will see fit to change their name, to definitely provide our employees with compensation that will allow them to continue to be productive. And as those folks retire or resign and find something else and we have to hire new people, it will enable us as a fiscal board to hire people who are certainly, who certainly care about this community, who are highly qualified and who can take our county further into the 21st century as many changes continue to happen daily, weekly, monthly, and obviously yearly. With growth in our county, the infrastructure, we've got to make sure we have the infrastructure we need. And of course, like I just said, hiring employees and keeping the employees, such as dispatch and our MPs and paramedics, keeping them and being able to hire highly qualified ones so that we can continue to provide the services that are necessary. Good morning, Kim, how are you?
Good morning.
To the studio.
Sorry, crack hands.
So with that said, I want to present my budget to Magister Lasswell. I appreciate Magister Lasswell being here. And Magister Mitchell, I appreciate you being here. And my office will speak to it, but the other two magisters will see their budget. In our budget, we see that spending, I have cut spending by $21,000. Real property receipts estimated at 4.9, hopefully that will go by 1.0. Mr. Griffey will talk in detail more about this shortly. I have proposed a 50 cent raise for all employees who are not in a supervisor's or a director's role. I have proposed 75 cents for each director. And may I add, in that situation, like I said at the beginning, I'm hoping this body will work with my office during this process so that maybe we can raise salaries even more. And I do hope it's taken into, I hope that it's kept in mind as to the work that our directors who are currently here are doing. I have proposed a 75 cent raise for all emergency personnel, EMPs, paramedics, and dispatchers. Anybody that has to do with personnel as far as emergency goes. Plus, my proposal is an additional 25 cents per every five years of service for those folks. And Mr. Griffey will talk more about that as related to matter pilot program, hopefully get that off the ground. I've included an additional $10,000 for the Economic Development Authority as economic development is critically important in any community. A new line item I have proposed is juvenile drug court for $15,000. We're all aware of the horrific drug problem that this whole nation is experiencing. Bullard County, it is not an exception. We have problems with the use of heroin and other drugs. And my administration is prepared to be proactive and look at this as a way to help folks and get them out on their feet. I am proposing $100,000 to build a bond for our quality center. I think parks and recreation brings higher quality of life and that's important to the 21st century folks. Moving the end, which helps homeless folks and help them, they help them get on their feet, $20,000. The Kentucky Regional Development Alliance, $10,000. And that is a partnership, it's a private slash public partnership with our most wonderful four office community. I am proposing an additional 2,500 for our multi-purpose community action agency. And Magister Lasswell, Magister Mitchell, we have Kim Embry, who is the executive director of Multi-Purpose here today, along with Tim and Michael Franch. They serve on the multi-purpose board. Now, with that being said, since I am proposing 2,500 in my budget, that only leaves 3,500 to make up for the 6,000 that I'm asking for today on this agenda. So when we look at it that way, it's a little easier to swallow. And our history museum has requested some funding, so I have proposed $5,000. And if you have been coming to fiscal board, you have heard of the problems with doing EPOs at the jail. Martin Knox is striving very hard to make sure those EPOs are accomplished. So with that said, in order to help our jailer and our jail, I am proposing $20,000 for personnel to complete those EPOs. Any questions for Congress from the magistrates, anybody here, or anybody in the audience? And Mr. Griffey, you all go ahead and go over that because I think the folks are here and I'll say, I don't think it's going to rush off in five minutes.
Just to touch on real briefly, just some of the highlights. Revenue is going up, we're starting to see some positives on all of the growth here. We're still a little behind, but we are starting to see that. So revenue should go up probably about half a billion dollars. Still too low, there's still more out there, but it is starting to catch up. The director's fees, or the directors pay, only have 75 cents. One of the issues we have is that we have to get our folks on the level playing ground with surrounding counties. This is the first step in that, so we're incrementally going to do this. That goes also into the pilot program. Our emergency workers, our first responders, giving them a 75 cent raise as well as a 25 cent for every five years of service. Again, this is a pilot program, we're going to start with the M. Hopefully, we can do this for all employees next year. But we have to start somewhere, we can't do everything and what else would, that's not fiscally sound or smart. So we're going to try to get our first responders, who we train, they go somewhere else. The cost of hiring and training is monumental. So we think this is the first step, trying to get people in and keep them here. The Quiet Center, $100,000. Mr. Mitchell's the chairman of that committee. We've got a lot of good things going on, a lot of good news here later on that, and we are going to be forward with that. What we've done is we've taken the $75,000 line item that we always had as a match to fix the tools, which was not enough to fix the tools, the problems that they had. We've upped that to 100, set that aside. We think once we can get everything and play their partners in the play, $100,000 will be our share of that, so we're already going to start. We won't have the bond in place this year, but we're going to put that line item in there to get ourselves ready and prepared to start paying forward on the products. The last thing on the juvenile drug court is a small amount, it's $15,000. I don't think any other counties have actively started juvenile drug courts, I know that's the talk. This is seed money. We do have some folks in the judicial, over at the courthouse across the street, that are willing to get this started. One of the things that we see are in drug court, it's people that have started. They see them as teenagers, they see them as adults, and then they see them as, as Judge Burris said, I mean, we had here, they see them in the obituaries. So we're trying to stop that, that's just a small, we don't know where we'll go from there, but we need to start somewhere, and so that's where the seed money is.
Can you explain a little bit more how that's going to work during the, with the $50,000? We have a conversation about how they try to implement this.
Well, they're going to model it after drug court. And Mr. Wilkerson probably has, probably has more knowledge of this than anybody else in here. They're going to model it after that, but we're going to, we're trying to follow what they're trying to do across the state and try to catch this early. Again, it's going to take a lot more money than that, but we're going to plant the seed with that to show that we're serious. It's more of a, we're in this, we're going to try to do some things and get this thing started. What does it look like? I don't know, that's not my expertise. I will tell you that this idea came from Jennifer Porter, from my wife. She wants to do this, John sees this, the sheriff sees this. You know, you see these kids now, in a tender's light, they're not even better. So is there something we can do? We don't know, we don't know what will work and what won't. But we know one thing that won't work is doing nothing. And so that's where we're going with it. So we'll have this seed money, we'll see what kind of planning comes up, what else we need. Hopefully, in the next couple of years, this thing will be up and running. And as the judge said, that there is a cut in spending, it's a small cut, that's about $21,000. So the budget is less than it was last year. And again, trying to do all these things and still have a smaller budget.
All right, thank you, Mr. Griffey. Number two on our agenda, I want to have Ms. Freena come on and talk about this. I should request to hire temporary personnel at the animal shelter. Good morning, Ms. Freena.
Good morning. Well, I guess according to your mail, that Mark Williams is out of the league for four weeks.
Well, he hasn't turned his paperwork yet.
Oh, okay, well, he's put in his time, put into the office until like May 18.
But just to be clear, he hasn't returned his paperwork yet to the office.
Correct, correct. But he has requested off till May 18.
That is clear, okay. And so. And that request began April the 18th through May the 18th.
He wasn't here on the 17th, and then on the 18th, he turned his paperwork, or no difference.
Okay, and let's note too that, you know, we're in a lot of mediation.
We could actually set up mediation with this building regarding several issues. And after, after we received this note that just occurred. So I'm requesting that we get some temporary help out of the shelter because tomorrow, Freddie worked the weekend, so she'll be off tomorrow. So that just leaves Tony and I off at the shelter. And then on Thursday, Tony had a doctor's appointment scheduled for last week or two weeks ago. We rescheduled because Mark Williams had a doctor's appointment, so he rescheduled that, so he will be off on Thursday. Leaving Brenda and I nominating to the shelter on Thursday as well. I got permission from the judge and Lisa to cut our hours back for the next two days to be open from 9:00 to 5:00 instead of 9:00 to 6:00. And they gave me permission for that. But we are, we have a lot of animals out there and that need taking care of and we can really use the extra help.
Who's doing the pickup now, Ms. Freena?
Uh, Tony, Tony is doing the runs, but tomorrow I will do the runs. Or, no, tomorrow's Wednesday, Thursday I will do the runs.
That's the only day he's scheduled to be off?
Yes. And then he's working Saturday, so with that being his day, then I will put him in overtime because he will be working on Saturday. Which the week before that I worked 14 days straight, because I covered the weekend.
Does the temporary help fiscal bar come back?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to do a way back. I'm going to motion temporary personnel at the animal shelter.
Thank you.
And what were your?
Right, right. I would say whatever Brenda is making, I think it's 12, when we come. Of course, we won't help out in the middle, so.
You got some laid in there?
I have a few that, where we have interviewed a few when we were doing the interview process. But I've had two applicants that have put in that are qualified and interested. Policy, they're available, just the problems, you know, people that have applied with us and have been here for full time, hard time work here, have a job, so they have to get you. So a couple of people that I have their resume on, you know, they're not working at this time. So it would just be, they would be able to fill in for this position.
Are they retirees or are they just?
No, they're, one of them's lady does rescue, she has rescue organizations, she works for her mother. And the other lady works at theater supply.
They don't obviously make any runs?
No. They just pretty much, we help us with phone calls, adoption, keeping the place clean, taking care of the animals. They have experience working in the shelter.
Do they work there for laundry or anything?
Uh, one lady's pull, one of us, one lady's pull from a table and help call here there. And there's another gentleman that I just called Tony to see if he came in today. Yesterday, he was waiting and everything for us. He spent, I mean, he spent seven and a half hours there yesterday helping us out. And I asked Tony to have him fill out an application as well, because he's not currently working. But no, his, you know, background or anything like that. But it would be a nice, more body here to help us get things done.
Will we start there?
I guess, hey Pete, I mean, as long as, whenever they can start, hopefully today or tomorrow.
Am I going to be able to help you this week then, after that, and you wouldn't?
No, I need it to Mark Williams comes back.
Right.
And then, you know, based on after the 18th, I mean, it may continue, I don't know. I mean, we're already short needed as it is because when you have someone that's gone all day on runs, still, if, you know, that person, there's still many people there at all times. So we got to lay out on runs. And of course, the stuff that I have been scheduled to get as my drop title is not getting done because I'm shelter staff.
So is this one, I'll make it terminated, is Mark going back?
Yeah, I mean, what's up to you all? Except for you all, I mean, we just need somebody, we need an extra person here to help us out. I just talked to Tony, he had my phone call and two more. He had his phone and then another phone call, and it's always standing in front of him. I mean, because Brenda doesn't come in for 10, but he's there by himself while I was here. And it took me two days to watch a webinar for a grant. I mean, you know, I couldn't even get through a webinar, I hired a webinar without being interrupted, so it took me two days to watch it for short needed. And you have to take care of customers first and the animals, so. And our volunteers, you know, they come when they can, but they're not, cannot, we're depending on them. We beg and plead, but it's all we can do.
And Judge Terrence, money that can be used around in the animal shelter budget to cover temporary, to temporary work.
Two, that's, I think that's.
And you can cover two.
What's the date, Mr. Williams will be back?
Um, please ask a question. Would, would I, is Mark Williams to back to the night 18?
I need to add it in here, I'm going to relook at it in the late theme tonight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You might want to say upon the return of your director.
Let's look at that again. Is that very much how it worked out, might be somebody else, might be who.
I'm just adding one up there. I'm just suggesting you might want to put in a motion upon the return of the director. Okay, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Williams, will you read the motion?
The motion is to hire temporary help at the animal shelter at a period of $12.20 per hour, no benefits, and to reevaluate the employee's status as of May 18, 2017.
I highly suggest it should read upon the return of the employee slash director. However, that's my opinion. Do you hear any more? Karen, excuse me. You hearing no comment on that, Ms. Williams, you can call her.
Ms. Mitchell? Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
I'm at my best.
Excuse me. Yes, but with my remark, Ms. Williams, I want to put in there that it concerns me a great deal that taxpayer money is being spent in such manners. Okay, thank you, Ms. Freena. And.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Freena. Okay, thank you, Ms. Freena, for all of your help, I really, really appreciate it. Number three on our agenda, I should request to pay multi-purpose community action agency an additional 3,500 since I have proposed the 2,500. But, so not to confuse anybody, it will be 6,000 that we're asking for today. So may I have Tim and Pam and Jill come on up? Let the magisters know who looks for, why we need it.
I have some information that we'd like to tell you on that illustrates the services that we provide at multi-purpose. As most of you know, we run a senior center here in Shepherdsville and serve anyone 16 and older. We offer different programs at the senior center such as health promotion, educational promotion, advocacy, recreation, et cetera. And we serve a pocket meal Monday through Friday. And we also deliver home delivery meals to frail elderly here. Besides that, we also do the senior commodity boxes, which is a partnership with Dairy Care, where once a month, senior citizens get a box of food to help supplement them. So that they, you know, a lot of these people are low on social security because most of the people that get these boxes are low income as well as the senior citizens. So this helps supplement their food. And we also operate a heating assistance program here from November usually through March 31st, which serve almost 1,000 clients last fiscal year. This information is for last fiscal year, and of course, I would have updated information at the end of this fiscal year. The reason I'm here, run the fiscal board, is that rent money just doesn't seem to meet our costs. And it's, all of our programs are expensive to run because obviously, you need people to do that. We've been having a tough year. We do operate in Shelby Spencer in Bullard County, and we've been having a rough year. One of the things that we've done this year that we haven't done in the past is, as you see, I work the things down between the cities because we've approached the various cities to ask them for their support too, depending on how many clients they have in each of the cities.
We also have senior citizen Zumba, which, and stretching exercises, which help them stay physically fit. Pretty, pretty much any suggestions that anyone has, we've, we've done that. Also, the government provided, had a program where they provided phones that had the larger screens on them, and also the, for the person calling the interview, their conversation was printed out on the screen. For those people who have side problems, they got those phones to those people. And that's people that we contact, asking them to come and help, you know, give their services to our seniors.
I retired five years ago, and I just was scanning the local pioneer news, and I seen the ad from the community service center over here, where they was offering exercise class, and I thought, well, I better get out there and do a little something, so my wife and I, we went over and started doing some exercises with the seniors, and we're kind of like freshmen over there, you know, we're the young kids in the block. And we kind of bonded with them, and if you've never taken a tour or even did do that, especially on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, when they had the big crowds over there, probably 80% of those folks are reliant upon transportation, they're probably just maybe 10, 15% of us that can, are mobile enough, we can drive ourselves, and those kinds of things. But, uh, Kim and my wife have told you about the programs that they do over there, and those are vital programs, but the thing that, that they really get over there that's priceless is the camaraderie. If they weren't there, they'd be home, and, you know, in alone situations, most of the time, and they wouldn't have the companionship, and those kinds of things. I don't know how you can put a price on that, but it's, it's something that's close to our hearts. So, they asked us if we would serve on the board there four years ago, and we said, yeah, this is a work of art, so that's what we've been doing.
With that said, I'll make a motion to allocate an additional $6,000 to our multi-purpose community action agency, and I really appreciate Kim, Tim, and Ken to advocate for our senior citizens, I very much appreciate that. I hope I can get a second on that motion.
I'll say the motion. We did want to ask a question, where did the food supply come from? Their corporate reason?
Uh, you're talking about the food that we need to share in the commodity boxes?
Well, that, the meals you prepared.
Well, the, the food in the commodity boxes comes from Derek Care. The way the meals are done, it's actually through a grant, and Mastersons delivers it, catered in big pans, and then we've got very specific instructions that we have to follow in order to serve them and also deliver them. It's called, the funding comes from Title III, the Oklahoma Act, and so, when that stuff passes all the way down from the feds to the state to give it to us, one, it doesn't leave much left, but, two, they get, they put a lot of requirements on us, on how that meals are served, and it is, it does meet the one-third dietary needs of a person at senior center, because that's one of the requirements, it has to meet the one-third dietary needs of the day for each senior. You're welcome.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion on the motion?
Judge, should you make part of your motion for the check to X and A?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
The children?
Yes.
I'm going to call my children, if you ever appreciate it. And the seniors really appreciate it, yes. Yes, I'm going to say it. I have my vote. Okay, I think I have a second.
I'm going to do it.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment, any questions or discussions? Can we have Ms. Rena call it off?
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Rachel?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
The children?
Yes.
And that's fine with me, um, I don't know if you'd like me to try to send that to patients, but Kim's got the list of the volunteers, and they'll zip it out, because I'm sending them, I finally got the letter, and I'm sending them, saying, you know, this is what we do, and this is what we're not, but saying thank you anyway. But I said the list, because I had a feeling, I knew that it was, it was a season, and I know it was simple, and it was a favor to that person. So anyway, so that's, so I, how are people working, I mean, if you need to be sent some type of information, you know, handles, at all times, you know, you need to figure out how you want to, what will you say, I'm adding all of that.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, it's fine.